Hi, I'm like.
Good evening, welcome to the November twenty-four, twenty twenty-five regular town council meeting. If we could please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I call these?
Mr. Coos.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Here.
Mrs. Diglio.
Here.
Mrs. Teeds.
Here.
Mayor LaFlock.
Here.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this regular meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board on January third, twenty twenty five. Sorry. All right, we received the regular and executive session meeting minutes of November tenth, ten, twenty twenty-five. Are there any additional changes, amendments, deletions, corrections?
Well, already.
Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the two minutes?
I will make a motion to approve the November tenth, twenty twenty-five, regular and executive session minutes.
And I will second the approval.
All right, I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio and a second by Councilwoman Teats. A roll call, please.
Mr. Coos.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. Teats.
Yes.
Mayor LaFlock.
Yes. At this point in the meeting, the town council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic to help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard. Speakers are asked to take one turn at the microphone and please limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office. After making your comments, it may be properly reflected in the minutes. The council may choose to comment after the entire public portion has concluded. Please identify yourself with your name for the record.
My name is Neil Flaherty. I live at one fifty-four Sparta Avenue in Newton. I have raised this topic several times before at budget meetings, but I thought it would be appropriate to do it as the staff, I'm sure, is already working on next year's budget. I would like the council to consider changing the way that the water and sewer bills are calculated. The charge for four thousand gallons or less is a flat charge. And the charge for above four thousand gallons is predicated on a flat charge per one thousand gallons, which is then divided by one thousand to come up with a gallon rate that's charged. The flat rate on the below four thousand for both the water and sewer really penalizes people who use less and are trying to conserve because they're actually being billed twice. They're being billed the minimum for four thousand gallons, but the following quarter they start with the prior meter reading and go forward from there, but you've already paid for a portion of that. So my suggestion on both the water and sewer is to take the four thousand gallons and divide that into that flat charge to come up with a per gallon charge similar to the way it's done above four thousand and only charge the individual for what they've actually used. This would eliminate the double charge on both the water and sewer. I have one other issue with regards to the sewer. Some residents, such as my property, is not on town sewer. But we're being charged for it based on water usage. And subject to the minimum if we're lower, but also subject to the above four thousand charge. I realize that in order to maintain the system, you need to have enough money and that even those of us who are not on the town sewer system do derive a benefit from it. So my suggestion in that case is that below the four thousand, they pay a per gallon charge the way anyone else would, but it be capped at the four thousand. That would eliminate that surplus charge for something that, in honesty, you're not using, but are still contributing to the overall benefit of the town in maintaining the system. I know that there is a potential grant out there that would help the water and sewer department change their billing system and upgrade it. And if that has gotten, I would ask that they also consider adding in the date that the meters were read so that you can monitor from one quarter to the next. Because there can be a variation that could result in additional charges if it's done early one quarter and late the next quarter. And since I've got my one minute warning, the only other thing, if possible, to add to the bill would be the per gallon charge that's being made, similar to a other utilities do it. Thank you.
Did I get it in the three minutes?
Yeah, good. Tom, anyone online? Or on Zoom?
No worries.
Okay. Mr. Flaherty, I know that you have raised this in the past and your suggestions are, I think, very reasonable. And I thank you for raising them again and bringing them up. You're right, the budget hearings are occurring right now. I have noticed during your comments that our town attorney, town manager, I know myself, and our CFMO were taking copious notes. So what I would just ask of the team is to look at what Mr. Flaherty has presented, and I'm also interested to know how many of our properties are not on the town water and sewer system. And I think the two requests of what should be shown on the bills are reasonable, the date of the meter reading and the per gallon charge. And just, just take a look and, and let us know what are some of the barriers to perhaps some of the suggestions that were made, if we could. Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, we'll move to council and council and manager reports. Tom?
Just a friendly reminder, offices close at three P M. on Wednesday, and we are closed for Thanksgiving and the day after, so happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I hope to see everybody at the parade on Saturday. I'm sure Sandy will mention that ten A M. this Saturday. Tree lighting is coming up here at Town Hall Friday, December fifth at five P M. And municipal offices will close at noon on Friday, December twelfth for the town staff professionals. Everybody, holiday party here at Town Hall. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Councilwoman Coos.
Just be a quick note that amongst most of the council members, I attended the municipalities conference and had the pleasure of attending multiple beneficial sessions. And I would just echo the support for looking into Mr. Flaherty's request. I believe that in previous years of requests, I had voiced some support for his desires, so looking at some numbers would certainly be helpful. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Diglio.
Well, Tammy. Well, I attended the economic awards dinner, or I should say luncheon, and I want to congratulate all those that won. But I want to especially congratulate Tom Russo, our town manager, for receiving the distinctive leadership award. Well deserved, Tom. Well deserved. And yes, I will mention the holiday parade. It is this coming Saturday, the twenty-ninth, and it starts exactly at ten o'clock. Lineup has been done. Everything has been set in motion. There will be two warming stations, one down by Christ Community Church and one at Jessica Cardwell's building, serving hot cocoa and coffee. And of course, Santa will be arriving. And he will be going around the block. And I did make arrangements to stall for time to try to get him around the block by having a dance group marching down Spring Street all the way, entertaining while Santa is trying to come around. So, and of course, I will have our wonderful first aid squad following them, giving him enough time. So hoping to see everybody there and wishing everybody a very, very happy Thanksgiving.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Teats.
So as Sandy mentioned, I'd also like to congratulate Tom on your award. I know it's been a long time coming, and every year when they're reading off the names and, and all the accomplishments and stuff, I'm like, it's a no-brainer. And, but this year was your year, and for that, congratulations ten times, because there's probably ten times in the past that we think it should have been you.
Great.
In addition to the, the holiday parade, I'll just say dress warm. I can't promise anything beyond that because it does look a little chilly. And I echo Councilman Coos's comments about the League of Municipalities, another like beneficial events across those days, like meeting with other officials, meeting, you know, strangers and tossing around ideas and conversations. It's, it's really good. As are a majority of the sessions I attended were also well received. And just a little reminder, in addition to the holiday parade, there is a gingerbread house contest that morning, so make your gingerbread houses and drop them off at two nineteen Spring Street, which is Orlando Rodriguez's law office, and you can do that starting at eight thirty A M. There's two categories, professional and kit. Still haven't decided which one I'm doing.
A whole village for that.
Yeah. Does it require Eddie baking? And let's see what else. Oh, and just a side note, in addition to this past week being the League of Municipalities, J P was also down for the EMS convention that was held later in the week. And I hope I get all of this right, but J P and his partner for the advanced life support group competition, they took second place. And I got to witness, so they do a simulation and they not only have to perform in front of their colleagues and other medical professionals, but they're also performing in front of an audience on a stage. And I think you're given the scenario right before the event, or you're trying to figure out the scenario that is involved. But it was very chaotic, but it also demonstrated what you, you can go through on a scene, that whether it's a motor vehicle accident, a structure fire. And just the fact that you didn't run off the stage screaming, because my O C D was like, oh, my God, what is going on? Why aren't, why isn't there more help? Like, why don't you call the fire department? Why don't, you know, like, all these things are going through my mind. And it was just, it was great to watch, and it was great to see that you guys placed second. And just for that, I wanted to congratulate you and the Atlantic Health Systems teams. And, you know, great, I know you're going to bring that knowledge back to your volunteer gig as well, and, you know, the, the town is very fortunate to have you in that role. And that is all I think I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Dixon?
Yes, I also want to congratulate Tom Russo on the distinctive leadership award. Well deserved. Also, three, he ever won the new business award, so congratulations to them. I too attended the League of Municipalities. I do want to recognize and thank the mayor and police chief for their presentation on
Thank you.
the behalf of Newton in regards to our efforts that we've been taking with the homeless population. I too attended a lot of various different sessions. Riot topics, pilots, federal grant opportunities, strategies due to some shift in federal funds, affordable housing, which was probably the spicier one of the sessions, some energy issues. And it's always a great time to be able to speak with other officials and professionals from all over the state, kind of collaborate, and then hear other people's challenges, successes, and then we're able to kind of bring them back here, collaborate and see what we can do here to help the residents of Newton. So it was a, it was a good good couple of days down there. That's all I have. I just hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, so on November twelfth, Jason, Chief Jason Miller from the Fire Department, I attended the two hundred club dinner. That's their annual fundraiser to raise money. Well retended, well attended from many of the first responder organizations throughout the county, state police, a lot of the police agencies and a lot of good recognition for some lifesaving efforts by our first responders throughout the county. As everyone has mentioned, great attendance at the Sussex County Economic Development Partnership Awards. Tom, so many of the town department heads were able to attend, which I think is great because they can also hear what's going on throughout the county with various projects and initiatives, and so the ability for us to bring a lot of staff along with us, I think, is always great when we can do that and afford it in the budget, so on and so forth. As we mentioned at the last meeting, I think a third or so of the eighties or so people and entities and businesses that were nominated were either from Newton or Newton adjacent. So as I said to a couple of people, I think at our table, the event started recognizing Newton and then ended by recognizing Newton. So as Matt mentioned, Curt and Cleaver took new business. The Sussex County Community College for the Business Advocacy Award. The County of Sussex, the travel tourism hospitality training was awarded for training and workforce development. And then, of course, as was mentioned, the distinctive leadership award, which, as Tammy said, was, is the highest honor that they give. I just want to read this. It says the distinctive leadership award is reserved for that individual or organization that has made an exemplary and or extraordinary contribution to economic development, and it was awarded, Tom, to you. Very well deserved. You've probably, should have gotten this award like every other year, I think, but I think we're a little biased. But what a wonderful recognition of your eighteen years of service. But what this, why I think this award is so important is it not just recognizes what happens in Newton, but the impact of what happens in Newton on the rest of the county. Moreover, you know, driven by you and all the successful projects that were mentioned and all the ones that are to come. So thank you for your ongoing leadership, and I'm glad that the county recognized that. This past Saturday was the Festival of Lights, albeit cold and a little bit rainy. I'm sorry, it was on the fifteenth, was, was also well attended. I want to thank our first responders and our police department. A lot of traffic comes through around the hospital. And it was another great night, and I've seen a bunch of people who work for Atlantic Health, like commenting just how beautiful the pictures, the trees are and all of those strands of lights and wreaths and all of that are sponsored by donors in the community. So it's really well, a nice community event. I wanted to also mention, I know Tom sent us an email, but I want to mention for the record, through the neighborhood preservation program, we've been able to spend some of this year-end dollars on marketing for the events that are going on in town, but really also for the businesses. So that is, you'll recall, a five-year grant, right? We're able to spend those funds and to put a bunch of it into marketing what's going on in town, but also very much to highlight the businesses. You know, news twelve ads, social media, iHeart Radio, podcast streaming, the Township Journal, billboards. So Michelle and Sandy, I hope that you'll just take that messaging back to the businesses and to the chamber as our representatives, just to, you know, again, let them know that the town's in their corner and certainly during the holiday season, we're promoting Small Business Saturday after the parade, and we hope people that will, people will come to town and not just visit, but go to the shows, go to the restaurants, shop here. I read an interesting article last week that if everyone just bought one forty-five dollar holiday gift from a small business as opposed to one of the big retailers, it would infuse billions of dollars into the economy. So we have a lot of great small businesses right now already decorated and working hard to provide a great shopping experience, and I hope people will come to Newton and avail of, of our restaurants and everything that we have going on here. Like my colleagues, I attended the New Jersey League of Municipalities Conference, echo what everyone said. And I especially, thank you, Matt, had the opportunity to represent the town where we had a presence to talk to a packed room on a panel that was hosted by the New Jersey Coalition to End Homelessness. And I would just want to acknowledge and thank Barry and Tom again for coming to my rescue, partially because we found out on Friday that the town of Newton was going to be on that panel. And Sunday and Monday, Barry and Tom had sent just a bunch of updates because while we kind of know what's going on and we're being updated all the time, there is daily movement that's happening on our initiative, on our ninety-day sprint. And what I will say, and, you know, Michelle, we had a lot of representation, Tom Ferry was there. Everybody was talking about the barriers that exist, and everyone was asking for the solution to be for the state of New Jersey to dump more money and, and earmark more money for homelessness prevention programs. Specifically, some of my colleagues on the panel wanted to institute additional taxes in order to achieve that. And our position was there's never going to be enough money from the state. Taxes are not the solution to everything, and a coordinated community response is what's proving for us to provide results. And I will say that what some of the other attendees and the audience got up to talk about from their own community's perspectives and their challenges were the exact challenges and barriers that we have started to break down and problem solve around. So I really do think that, I mean, we don't do it for the recognition, and Thomas said that before, to put Newton on the map, but I think collectively, what has been created is going to be replicable to Tom. So thank you for that. And I'm sure you already got some feedback from the, from the panel. Just one other reminder, I think within a twenty-four hour period, our first responders in town responded to like two, two or three motor, serious motor vehicle accidents with entrapment and while it's, it's very busy, it's dark now, people are looking at holiday decorations, they're out shopping, the kids are out and about. Just want to first of all, say thank you to our first responders. But also just remind everyone about pedestrians and minding crosswalks and adhering to traffic signals, because I feel like even this weekend was so crazy busy up around the ShopRite area, people shopping for Thanksgiving and just people were like, looking at their phones, going through red lights, just crazy driving. And on that, I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. Please be safe out there. That's all I have.
I just would like to remind everybody, we do have a holiday lights contest.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Email your address to marketing@newntontownhall.com by Tuesday, December second. Winners will be selected on December fifth. That's when the judging is.
Yes, I think our seniors are going to go around and judge.
Every year, they look forward.
Yes, the senior shuttle, they do.
But the seniors also have their holiday luncheon on the sixth at, I believe it's at twelve thirty, and it's going to be here. So if you want to go, you'd R S V P by December first to recreation@newntontownhall.com where you can call.
Yes, and I hear it's going to be better than ever. Building on a last year, very successful event. So that's great. Thanks for that reminder. Tom, did I forget anything? Okay, we'll move on. We have no unfinished business. We'll move on to ordinances. We have introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one. This is an ordinance of the Town of Newton authorizing the execution and delivery of a financial agreement by and between the Town of Newton and Newton Two One Three Urban Renewal L L C. Have a motion to introduce?
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Coos.
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. Teats.
Yes.
Mayor LaFlock.
Yes, and I just want to pause. I don't know, Tom, if you wanted to, I should have asked you if you want to make any comments on that. But this is eighteen years plus of work to get this financial agreement, redevelopment agreement, like all of it, to the table, to get it signed and to get going on it. I just want to congratulate this council, the councils before us. Tom, you've been the steady force throughout the eighteen years to bring this to fruition. I know we have a resolution on the consent agenda that is the corresponding resolution to this ordinance, but congratulations. Tell them if there's anything else on this ordinance you want to say.
No, just like you said, recognize all the work that the councils have put into this. The professionals Doug is on, in case there were any questions. He's on the Zoom. The volunteers, the boards, I mean, just think of the thousands of hours that went into this.
So many.
Yeah, just a lot of work. I, I'm blessed that I get to shepherd things through, but it really was a labor of love for a lot of people to get to this point. And, you know, it's a significant investment on part of the redeveloper in the town, so we're grateful for that.
Absolutely. A long time coming, and I know that this is going to be so well received by everyone who comes to the Town of Newton. Doug, thank you for attending the meeting tonight. We missed you last week. I was looking for you. But appreciate your work and all the, your offices work. Many hours, I know we see in the bills, but behind the scenes, working to get this to the place that now. So Doug, I didn't know if you had any additional comments.
Doug, you want to jump in if you unmute?
Yep, sure. Can you hear me? Great. No, I just want to say thank you to everybody for allowing me and Anna to work with everybody bringing over the finish line. Yeah, this started many years before I arrived at the scene and through the patience and diligence of Tom, really, and stewarding us through this. And I, I think the foresight of the governing body to recognize that it was, it was a deal worth making, and I think the benefits to the to the Newton, to the Newton taxpayers, the Newton community is, is really going to be tremendous with the new ShopRite the new liquor store and the additional pads that I think are going to bring more opportunities for jobs and, and other places to eat in Newton. So thank you for allowing me to be a part of this process.
That'd be great. Thank you. So the public hearing on the, this ordinance will be held on Monday, December fifteenth at seven o'clock or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard. Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, this is an ordinance to establish minimum and maximum salaries and wages for officers and employees of the Town of Newton for calendar year twenty twenty-six. This is an annual ordinance. Do I have a motion to introduce?
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two.
Do I have a second? All right, I have a motion by Councilwoman Teats and a second by Deputy Mayor Dixon. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Coos.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. Teats.
Yes.
Mayor LaFlock.
Yes, at that ordinance, the public hearing will also be heard on December fifteenth. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the town council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members so request, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Mr. Russo, can you run through the resolutions?
Sure. Two forty-six is a change order for Mars Lake Dam Blowoff Project Reduction. Twenty-four thousand, four forty-eight. Two forty-seven is the resolution for the redevelopment agreement for Newton Two Thirteen Urban Renewal. That's for the Armory redevelopment. Two forty-eight is a disclosure contract for air duct cleaning. Two forty-nine, hiring of a certain police officer. Several refunds, two fifty, two fifty-one, two fifty-two, three, four, five, and six. Those are from Teresa's office. Two fifty-seven, change order number two for million paving improvements to Duma Duma Valley View Babbitt, reduction of two thousand five hundred thirteen dollars and then bills and vouchers.
Thank you. Tom, thank you also for your email with regards to the police department's structure. I think it's super helpful as we're thinking about succession planning. Any resolutions that need to come off the consent agenda for further discussion? Or because of conflicts? None? All right, can I have a motion for the agenda?
I'll make a motion to for the consent agenda as, as stated.
Got what I was saying? Yep. Do I have a second?
I will second the motion.
All right, I have a motion by Councilwoman Teats to accept the consent agenda as presented and a second by Councilwoman Diglio. Roll call, please.
Mr. Coos.
Stating on checks one four, four two zero and one four, four eight three and one four, four five seven. Yes, otherwise.
Mr. Dixon.
I'm going to stand from check one four, four two zero. Yes, otherwise.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. Teats.
Yes.
Mayor LaFlock.
Yes. All right, we'll reopen the comments to the public. Anyone in person wishing to make additional comments? Okay, yes. Sure.
I just merely want to congratulate Tom also on the honor, and I do think it's well deserved. And also amazed, I've watched year after year, the the property over there by ShopRite, the Armory property and how that has dragged on. So congratulations on that alone, you deserve.
Most of Flaherty, it should be noted as well that your service on the planning board, right, I think, has been for almost as long as we've been trying to work on that project. So no, 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 absolutely not, absolutely not, but an opportunity to thank you for your service nonetheless. Any additional comments from anybody online, Tom? Any additional comments from anybody online, Tom?
No reason.
All right, any additional council or manager comments? Mr. Russo?
Not at this.
Mr. Kous?
So one of, one of the fortunate and unfortunate aspects of going first during the council reports is that sometimes you miss things that you weren't privy to. And if you go later, you might not be able, or you, you might be able to just kind of sneak it in as if you remembered it in the first place. So one of those things is Tom's award, so obviously I was not able to attend the event. So it wasn't on the forefront of my mind. But I think that it's important to pay attention to what that award actually was, which was the Distinctive Leader Award. And as we all know, Tom is the town manager. But it's important to call attention to the difference between a manager and what a leader actually is. And as we all know, as anyone knows in the town, Tom is the town manager. He takes care of the short-term tasks, making sure that he's doing things right. Whereas a leader motivates, inspires, and projects a vision, a long-term vision, doing the right things. And particularly calling attention to the ShopRite Development Project. Absolutely meeting the qualified qualification of that long-term vision since it's been ongoing for his entire tenure. So I think that it's, you know, quite apropos that the leadership or the distinctive leadership award comes in the same year that this project, I won't say is finalized, but has really come to a head with the ordinance that we just introduced to them. So congratulations on, well deserved for your long-term vision for the town, which certainly has come to fruition. Anyone pass some memory back to what the town was like 18 years ago.
For sure.
Certainly a different place today.
For sure. And I look forward to that development once completed, getting additional recognition from the Sussex County Economic Development Partnership.
I'm just sorry that the groundbreaking will be when Matt's mayor and not Helen.
I will be right there. I will be there right next to him. Look, as long as it's, as long as it happens, doesn't matter. It's a group effort.
With any project, there are delays, so you might come around.
JP?
Yeah, you'll be, you could be mayor again when the ripping, cutting comes along.
Let's not say that. All right.
I do, I do have one other too. And JP, it doesn't matter if you go first, third, you know, you have notes in front of you because I skipped half my notes and, you know, comments about Helen's participation, you know, on that panel and others. So it may look like this is an easy gig, but we sometimes mess up as well. But I did want to quickly mention, you know, for the record there, and Mr. Flaherty, thank you for reminding me. I had this in front of me, and even after you spoke, I forgot to mention it. But some of the residents in the town of Newton may have received a bill for their Newton Water and Sewer utility that looked, hey, this quarter's bill isn't bad at all. And then when you look at the reading, you realize you haven't consumed any water in the past quarter. So I knew there was an issue, stopped by the office downstairs today, spoke with Jackie, helpful as usual, said there were corrected bills being sent to those of us impacted. And by the time I got home, an hour later, in the mailbox was a corrected bill. But very efficient. But just making it known so that people aren't surprised. And if you, you know, you don't receive one of those corrected bills and you pay online, you should see the correct amount online as opposed to the hard copy.
Yeah, that's good. Thanks for that PSA, Michelle.
You are welcome.
Sandy, anything else?
Nothing else.
Nothing? All right, with that, unless there's anything else, I'll take a motion to adjourn at 7:34 PM.
I'll move to adjourn. I'll second.
And I have a motion by Councilman Kous and a second by Councilwoman Diglio. All in favor?
All.
All right, have a wonderful evening. Happy Thanksgiving.